There will be results in tax revenue for the town. He also said June 22nd is the deadline for the town to exercise the right of first refusal on the property. Mr. Pecos said the town cannot afford this property and if the council wants it, then they should pay for it by raising the tax levy by $775,000 instead of zero and then use the money to buy the land. Mr. Pelletier said Casella is a publicly held company and as such owe their shareholders a profit. Mr. Pelletier said if Casella applies for site assignment and they can prove there's no danger to public safety or the environment, then the Board of Health must allow it and if not, then Casella can appeal a denial. Counselor Pelican asked if a bond could be issued to purchase the land. Mr. Pecos said yes, the town could issue a bond for this purpose, which would have to be paid back, obviously. Mrs. Manis said it would be nice to hear from Casella to ask what they intend to do up there. Discussion was held and it was agreed that the whole council needed to debate this issue. In order to bump this up to council, Counselor Pelican made a motion to recommend the town purchase the McKinstry land, the trust land, for $775,000 under the provision of MGL Chapter 61A. General discussion was held, the motion wasn't seconded. So, under that discussion, Mr. Pelletier said if the town approves nothing, then the current landfill will be closing as of approximately December 2016. Mr. Pelletier described some of the benefits to the existing landfill contract, including royalty payments, free trash pickup for town residents, property tax receipts for the town, and others. Mr. Pelletier said if a landfill is approved for the site, then the town gets to start slowing its reliance on Casella instead of suddenly stopping in a year and a half. Again, there was quite a bit of discussion held on the above information. Counselor Pelican withdrew her motion. A new motion was made by Counselor Pelican, seconded by Mrs. Cristo, to recommend this item to go to full council for further discussion with no recommendation from the subcommittee and it was voted 5-0, all in favor to do so and it will come up on a future agenda shortly. Agenda item number two, discuss revised discriminatory harassment policy as presented by Maya and vote to include said revisions in the town's personnel rules and regulations and submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Cristo made the motion, seconded by Mr. James to vote the item. Mr. Pecos described the changes as minor adjustments to existing language. We had a little bit of discussion, looked at all the changes and we voted, vote by show of hands, 5-0, all in favor. Motion adjourned was made by Mrs. Cristo, seconded by Mr. Vandal, all in favor. We adjourned the meeting at 8:31. Respectfully submitted Max Gullickson, recording clerk pro tem, and there is no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
B, DPW Counselor Vandal.
Thank you. A meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, May 13, 2015, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Clements, Counselor Estrada. Also in attendance were Counselor Steve and Heather Blakely. Mark Morin was excused and Roger Cowett was absent. I call the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Agenda item number one, review StanTech's proposal for engineering services, major demolition at the wastewater treatment facility for a total fee of $49,708 and submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Blakely said this is the first step to get the projects from the wastewater treatment plant done. This is just to get the engineering and bid process started for the demolition. The money has already been appropriated in FY 2015 sewer budget. Agenda item number two, review StanTech's proposal for engineering services, phosphorus removal and sludge de-watering for a total fee of $275,744 and to submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Blakely said this is for engineering services for the new equipment needed for phosphorus removal and sludge de-watering. We are looking into using the retained earnings funds so that there is no need to borrow the money. A motion was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to approve StanTech's proposal for engineering services, phosphorus removal and sludge de-watering for a total fee of $275,744 to be taken from retained earnings. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 3-0. Agenda item number three, review StanTech's proposal for engineering services, biotower upgrade preliminary design and system bypass design for a total of $49,750. Submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Blakely said this is the third major piece to do the design work for the system bypass and the preliminary paperwork, application to get funding. Low interest loan with long-term financing from DPE. A motion was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to approve StanTech proposal for engineering services, biotower upgrade preliminary design and system bypass design for a total fee of $49,750 to be funded from retained earnings. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 3-0. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Estrada. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 3-0. I adjourned the meeting at 6:22 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Manis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. If we could just get these minutes amended to reflect that I was actually at this meeting, it doesn't state it in the minutes, so I was there for the full meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Pelican.
Thank you. We have a meeting coming up on Wednesday at 7:00 PM in the Rice Room and that is to discuss the final school budget number we will be recommending to the full council.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I have not had any meetings recently and there are no minutes to read and there are no meetings planned in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protections of Persons and Property, Counselor Carrasco?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there's no meeting minutes, but I will be scheduling another meeting for police business, police matters.
Thank you. And F, Town Manager Search Committee, Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, well, just to give everybody an update and also keep our public informed, we had what we would call semifinalist interviews from a very deep pool. We are, I'm speaking for myself, but I would go forward and say that out of the candidates that we did interview, any of them would be able to be our next town manager. Unfortunately, right now, we still have to wait. We're in the process of doing background checks and also making sure that they are still available for the position. It is our, we are in the process and we hope to, for our next meeting, June 1st, the Town Manager Search Committee will be present and they will then present the finalists to the town council. And I believe we all know that on June 4th, the town council will be doing their interviews with the finalists. So, on June 1st, the town search committee will present the names and then on June 4th, we will have a council of the whole meeting to host interviews here at council chambers.
Counselor Manis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you, to Vice Chairman Carrasco. June 4th, council of the whole meeting, I was not aware of that, so what time will that be? Will that be, will that time be to?
It all, I would say, it all really depends on how many candidates we have to present forward. If we have four candidates to present forward, I'm assuming we would start at five. If we have three candidates, maybe we'll start at six. We're looking at...
I just would hope that you'd be mindful that the majority of us up here, we work and we have busy schedules and it's very convenient for our town council meetings to start at seven. If need be, I'm sure that some people could get out earlier, but I'm not, you know, I can't speak very well.
I'm okay having a 7 o'clock meeting as long as this council wants to stay till midnight because you're looking at three to four interviews at 45 minutes apiece. That's the reason and I believe the chair actually sent out that date almost two or three weeks ago.
It happened, I believe it had been sent out by email, but it was also something that was stated at the last council meeting, if not the one prior as well, but...
I don't recall seeing that, but it could be my memory.
But again, it all depends on the background checks and also how many finalists are presented to the council on the first. So, it could be three, it could be four, and I can tell you if it's four, we're probably looking at 5:00, 5:30 to kind of fit everybody in and make sure it's a constant flow.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like 1:00, 2:00 o'clock now.
Oh, absolutely not, no.
Thank you.
Counselor Vecchia?
To the chairman, so what time's the meeting going to start?
It is not yet determined. There are four candidates that have been offered interviews.
The earlier the better, for me.
So, it's just a matter of allotting enough space for each person to get thoroughly vetted in terms of interview process. We don't want to rush through that, but we also want to be cognizant that we don't want to keep everybody here for some sort of marathon inquisition as well. So, we will hopefully know soon. Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, they do have a small omission, so we'll go through real quickly with just the chairman's announcements. Just wanted to give some positive publicity for three upcoming events, starting Thursday, running through Sunday, down on the corner of Main and Pleasant Street, there will be a carnival, thanks to the Police Association. I believe it's Fiesta Shows once again. Also this weekend, on Saturday, is a scholarship fund bike run for Karen's Cause, which is Saturday, and starts and ends at the Eagles Club in the morning. And a week from then, on May 30th, downtown Southbridge will be Southbridge Fest once again. So, especially for May 30th, if you're traveling or going to work or planning to go anywhere, be cognizant that pretty much from where Cumberland Farms will be to the post office most likely will be blocked off, so you'll want to seek alternative routes and leave some time for yourself. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Harney, who is filling in as our town manager tonight for town manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a memo that I would like to read. It is from Anna Smith, the town's landfill monitor agent, for an update of the landfill incident that happened last, the end of last week. This memo serves to summarize and clarify the events of 5/14/15 at the landfill involving an explosion. At 8:30 PM on Thursday, May 14th, Southbridge and Charlton Fire Departments independently responded to multiple 911 calls describing an explosion in the vicinity of the Southbridge landfill. Tracy Markham from Casella Waste also received a similar call from a resident living adjacent to the landfill. Upon arrival at the landfill, the Southbridge Fire Department located a diesel fuel truck on fire within a new cell at the landfill. It was determined to be an equipment fire rather than a landfill fire. Other than pieces of landfill equipment, there were no other exposures. The Southbridge Fire Department took command of the site using four tanker trucks between the Southbridge Fire Department and Charlton Fire Department. The two towns alternated using water from fire suppression and to wet the ground around the tanker truck to put out small areas of waste that had caught fire from the explosion. Foam fire suppressant was obtained from the Worcester Fire Department to extinguish the burning fuel. Andy Pelletier, health director, was on the scene, as was Anna Smith, landfill monitor and Casella personnel. Casella personnel aided the fire department in moving the landfill equipment that was on the scene. Kevin Pecos, the acting town manager, was kept informed via telephone. The Department of Environmental Protection was contacted. Their emergency response was on-site and required a soil test to determine if there was a release of fuel on the ground. Troopers assigned to the Fire Marshal's Office were also on-site for an investigation. The Fire Marshal's Office was on-site again on Friday and they and Casella's safety officers conducted a thorough investigation of the fuel tank and the scene. They deemed the cause of the fire to be undetermined at this time, but will continue to work on a cause. Casella contacted their third-party engineer, Sanborn Head, to determine if the landfill liner was impacted by the fire. The DEP Solid Waste Division and Emergency Response were on the site again on Friday. James McQuade of DEP determined on-site while the waste, I'm sorry, remained on-site while the waste was pulled back and the liner investigated. It was determined that the landfill liner was not affected by the event. A soil sample was taken to determine whether or not there was a fuel release to the trash and we rate the results. No one was injured in the event. In addition to the fuel truck, two other pieces of equipment were damaged within the landfill cell. And if anyone has any questions, they can either be directed to Andy Pelletier at the Health Department at 508-764-4252 or to Chief Mark DeFranzo at 508-764-5430. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, we have a couple of presentations, the first of which, and I'd like to invite Norman Brodeur, who is president of the Southbridge Lions Club, for a short presentation on the Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer I believe most people know of the Lions Club and a lot of the great work they do and today, through some of the work of their members in recognition of one of their own, we are going to read off a proclamation from the town of Southbridge here. This says, "Presented to the Southbridge Lions Club, whereas the Massachusetts Legislature enacted and Governor Deval Patrick signed into law on 9 October 2014, the establishment of the last Tuesday in May as Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day and whereas Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of esophageal cancer and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates nearly 17,000 new esophageal cancer cases will be diagnosed this year and whereas diagnosis of this cancer is the fastest growing in the United States, increasing more than 400% in the past 20 years and whereas cancer of the esophagus, I'm sorry, usually is diagnosed at a late stage and therefore has a poor outlook and whereas tobacco and alcohol use, obesity, diet low in vegetables and fruits, Barrett's esophagus and longstanding reflux are primary risk factors, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council of Southbridge does hereby recognize 26 May 2015 as Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day and ask all citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate successes and memorialize lost battles in witness therefore this 18th day of May 2015."
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much. Thank you. Just to give you a little background, my name is Norman Brodeur, I'm president of the Southbridge Lions Club. I've got several members here from the Lions Club. A couple of years ago, one of our members, Todd Sansucci, came down with esophageal cancer. As members of the Southbridge Lions, we're required to wear a suit coat, sports coat, and usually a regular tie and we meet every Tuesday. Well, Todd started coming to the meeting wearing a bowtie, then other members joined in. We started having Bowtie Tuesdays every once in a while. Back in September of last year, Gary Fontaine came up with the idea of trying to get this enacted into law as Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer. He contacted State Rep. Peter Durant and also contacted Senator Richard Moore, who contacted the governor. And the governor, as Sean said, signed into law in October of 2014. We're very proud to accept this from the members of the town council. Very proud to, like, next Tuesday is going to be our Bowtie Tuesday. It's the last Tuesday in May and I am very proud to say that I am the president of all of these guys. They're a fantastic group of guys. We do an awful lot. And, you know, years ago, the Southbridge Lions Club, it was more for sight and hearing. Now, all we're hearing about is cancer. And we give thousands of dollars every year to cancer funds. And so, I'd like to introduce the members of the Southbridge Lions Club, they have a few things to say. Thank you very much.
Members of the town council, esophageal cancer is the seventh most leading cause of cancer deaths worldwide.
In 2014, an estimated 18,000 cases were diagnosed and 15,500 deaths.
There are two types of esophageal cancer, squamos cell carcinoma and adenocarcinoma.
Adenocarcinoma is the most common in the United States.
Endocarcinoma is directly related to GERD, acid reflux, reflux and Barrett's esophagus.
Some of the common symptoms of esophageal cancer are difficulty or pain in swallowing, weight loss, blood in your stool, loss of appetite, feeling very tired, GERD or acid reflux, pain in your throat or back, hoarseness or coughing.
Esophageal cancer does not discriminate against anyone. Men and women can all be affected, although the rate is higher in males.
Medic, excuse me. Medication for GERD or acid reflux masks symptoms, but does not stop reflux from happening, leaving damage to be done silently.
Esophageal cancer is missing from the American Cancer Society's guidelines for early detection of cancer.
Esophageal cancer is the fastest growing cancer in the United States according to the National Cancer Institute.
The diagnosis of esophageal cancer is up 600% since 1970.
Esophageal cancer is one of the deadliest cancers. Patients diagnosed with stage four face a daunting 3.5% survival rate. 96.5% of patients will die.
Most cases of esophageal cancer are found late in the disease and by that time it's already spread to other organs.
There is no standard of routine screenings to detect esophageal cancer in the early
Symptoms do not usually arise until the cancer has become advanced. Esophageal cancer is among the cancers receiving the least in research funding.
In 2012, the National Cancer Institute decreased its investment in esophageal cancer
Esophageal cancer is critically underfunded. Our best defense against esophageal cancer is education and early detection.
We are a society that self-medicates for acid reflux and have a healthcare system that over-medicates for symptoms without any real monitoring or screening for progression of disease.
Before I state my fact, I just want to question for the town council, who here has had issues with acid reflux? Anybody? This is a very important fact and Dana Farber, right in our backyard, recommends that if you have issues with acid reflux or GERD, hot burn, whatever you want to call it, that you need to get an upper endoscopy or an upper scope every year. This is where it's all kind of missing. Breast cancer has a mammogram. Esophageal really doesn't have a test that can come up with something other than an upper scope. So, if you have issues like that, it's very, very serious and we need to recognize that fact. It can save your life. That being said, I want to thank the Southbridge Town Council for having us here today. And I want to thank my fellow Lions for their support as well. I also want you to know that I'm a part of the 3.8% survival rate and I just want to make that clear. Our hopes tonight are that there are many phone calls made to primary care physicians tomorrow morning. It's a simple procedure. An upper endoscopy, the most you'll ever have is a slight sore throat. It's very easy. They will put you under, but it's a very short time and it's a very, very easy procedure and insurance companies cover it. So, please, make the phone calls tomorrow morning if you're having issues and get the process started. Thank you very much.
So, one of the benefits of the position I'm in at the moment is just this and that certainly those who know me know that cancer awareness and the fight against cancer is paramount to pretty much anything, from family experience, personal experience and that of friends. I knew Todd socially and peripherally for a little while and it was just a few years ago that we had a couple of family members in my, of my own family that were unfortunate in that their battles with cancer ended too soon. It was about that time that we, as a family, reformed as a team for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life and it wasn't long before Todd, who at each, each of those darkest hours that our family went through, was among the first to show up at our door. And it wasn't long after that we formed this team that Todd stepped up and wanted to be part of that. And serendipitously, it was soon after that Todd learned of his own diagnosis. It's been, through these last few years especially, a number of conversations and the ups and the downs and the experiences and I can't say enough for Todd, for his family, Kim and his son Jack and daughter Olivia and his mother Mary and everybody, the Lions Club in particular. Todd has received a great deal of support, continues to and always will, and that is because of the support, the unconditional support that Todd has always offered to pretty much everybody. If you believe in karma, you know, then you know that what Todd just stated about beating those odds will certainly come true. And with that, I just have one other proclamation. And this is presented to Todd Sansucci. So, it's a few more wherashes. Whereas the Massachusetts Legislature and Governor Deval Patrick signed into law on 9 October 2014, the establishment of the last Tuesday in May as Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day and whereas the Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of esophageal cancer and whereas Todd Sansucci's courage and spirit in the face of great adversity is the impetus for the establishment of Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day and whereas Todd Sansucci's perseverance and positivity has been an inspiration to all who have had the good fortune to know him and whereas those who know and loved Todd Sansucci await the day when we'll be able to joyously and triumphantly trumpet, "And Down Goes Cancer." Now therefore, in honor of Todd Sansucci, be it proclaimed that the town of Southbridge does hereby recognize the 26th of May 2015 as Southbridge Lions Club Bow Ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day and ask all citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate Todd's success.
Thank you so much, Sean. Yeah, just thank you so much. It's a pleasure to fight this fight, aside the Moriarty family, for all that they've been through and what I'm going through. And again, thank you to my fellow Lions and my wife.
We'll move on now to Agenda Item 6B, Veterans Memorial Day Services, and that'll be a brief overview by our Veterans Agent, Mike Trombley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Madam Town Manager, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to give you a brief overview of the Veterans Council planned Memorial Day ceremonies, which actually began yesterday and will continue on through the end of the day on Monday, May 25, 2015, which is Memorial Day. Our observance has actually started yesterday morning. Several members of the Veterans Council attended mass at St. John Paul Church, which was members of the VFW, the American Legion, Marine Corps League, and VFW. Beginning this Friday, council members and volunteers from the community will be assisting the Veterans Council placing U.S. flags on our deceased member graves in New Notre Dame Cemetery, beginning at 12:00 noon. Saturday morning, St. Mary's Cemetery will be completely covered with American flags by the Southbridge Rotary Club. And also Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. in Oak Ridge Cemetery, the Veterans Council members and volunteers will be placing flags, in excess of 600 flags, at Oak Ridge Cemetery on Everett Street in Southbridge. This year, we will place a total of 2,162 flags on the graves of our deceased veterans throughout the seven community cemeteries. Our first ceremony on Monday will take place right in front of this very building at the G.A.R. monument. That ceremony will begin at 8:30 a.m. Each monument that we visit, as we have in the past, will have a speaker. We will be placing wreaths, a 21-gun salute, and then we'll move on to the next monument. Once the G.A.R. monument is completed out here in front of the town hall, we'll reline at the end of Elm Street, and then we will leave at 9:00 a.m. shop, travel up Main Street to Hamilton Street to the Hycom Monument for another ceremony. Upon completion of that ceremony, we will travel down Hook Street to North Street to the Gold Star Mother's Circle. Once there, we will do our ceremony at the three monuments, move, once completed, up Main Street to the Honor Roll Monument, where Father Peter Joyce will do an invocation, and then we will move to the monument next to the Honor Roll Monument, which is World War II. Once that ceremony is completed, we will move up Main Street, turn left onto Elm Street, and do the monument across the street from this very building, which is the World War I Monument. Once that ceremony is completed, we will break, travel to the Polish-American War Veterans Monument across from Big Bunny on West Main Street. And once that monument ceremony is completed, we will travel back to the VFW Post 605-5 on Everett Street in Southbridge. When that ceremony is completed, that will end our Memorial Day ceremonies for 2015. Participants of the ceremonies will be requested to join us for refreshments at the VFW following the end of the ceremonies. All information, I plan to do my best to get into the Southbridge news, Worcester Telegram by Friday, as well as cable access television. At this point, I respectfully request the presence of council members to join us for our memorial ceremonies, and I also invite the general public to join us on Monday, May 25, for our Memorial Day ceremonies, which are sponsored by the Southbridge Veterans Council. I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Councilor Vecchia?
What time should we be there? 8 o'clock?
If you're here at 8:15, you're golden.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Though not on the agenda tonight, we're just going to invite Deputy Police Chief Shane Woodson to the podium for a brief update and some other news around town.
Good evening, Ms. Harneis, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice, other councilors. Tough act to follow up with the Lions Club. I'm here tonight to discuss the tragedy that recently occurred in our community. Our department has been inundated with calls from concerned citizens regarding this incident, and I'm here just to speak briefly and hopefully answer any questions within reason that anybody has. First, I'd like to express my sympathy for the family of 59-year-old Joseph A. Stanek, who was a resident of Southbridge and was the victim of a homicide that occurred last weekend. I think I can also speak on behalf of all the men and women for our police department in saying that Mr. Stanek's entire family is in our thoughts and prayers. With that said, prepared a brief statement here so I got all the facts correct. At approximately 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 9, a citizen contacted our police department requesting that we perform a well-being check for Mr. Stanek. The caller was concerned because he had a prearranged meet scheduled with Mr. Stanek out of state. They were friendly. They were supposed to meet up. Mr. Stanek never showed up. The person was very concerned, contacted us. Immediately upon receiving that call, we responded to Mr. Stanek's home to investigate. Upon their arrival, officers were able to gain access into Mr. Stanek's home, where they located him. He was obviously deceased, laying face down, and he was covered in blood. The scene was secured. Our detective was notified. He assumed control of the investigation, being that it was determined as suspicious in nature. The Mass State Police Detective Unit was also notified, and they responded to the scene to assist. Over the course of the next five days, our detectives, as well as the state police detectives assigned to the district attorney's office in Worcester, worked tirelessly around the clock. When I say tirelessly, I mean, you know, over the last five days, they probably worked about 100 hours. Their outstanding police work, it's an unfortunate event, but their police work led to the execution of a search warrant at the residence of 48-year-old David E. Roman, who's a resident in Dudley, Mass. As a result of that search warrant, and due to statements obtained during this ongoing investigation, Mr. Roman was arrested and charged with murder. Mr. Roman's currently being held at Worcester County House of Correction and is being held without bail. It's important for me to stress, and one of the main reasons why I'm here tonight, and I thank the council for allowing me to come up here, the residents that live in that neighborhood where the crime was committed, it's important for them to know that Mr. Stanek and Mr. Roman knew each other, and this was not a random crime that was committed in our community. It was a well-planned-out, well-executed crime. It's not random. And of course, this investigation's ongoing, so I'm limited in what I can release regarding this entire matter. It's also important to note that this crime would not have been solved without the efforts of our five detectives, as well from our police department, as well as the state police detectives from Mass State Police. So, within reason, if anybody has any questions, I just wanted to make it clear, and again, I thank everybody.
Just wanted to, first off, just thank all of those who have been involved in investigating this and trying to bring some closure to the families as well. Councilor Carrasco?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the deputy, and I just want to say thank you to you and the men and women in your department. For somebody that lives as close as you can possibly can to Mr. Stanek, it was very scary on Saturday night to come home to something like that. That never happens in our neighborhood. But I want to say thank you for the work that you guys did. It was phenomenal, and our neighborhood is very appreciative. Thank you.
Councilor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to thank Deputy Chief Woodson for coming out tonight and explaining to the community the events that took place and the capture of the suspect, and to assure that the community is safe. Thank you very much.
If I can close just quickly, if any citizen has any questions, any issues, any concerns, please, please call me. Call me anytime. Call. If you don't want to speak with me, just ask to speak with a detective. Any neighborhood residents, anybody, any issues, just please call us, and we'll help you out. Thank you.
And just finally, before we move on, since our last regular town council meeting, the community lost a former town councillor and very recently member of the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees, and that was John "Jack" Lashapell. And just wanted to take a brief moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. We move on to Agenda Item Number 7, Citizens Form. And if at this time, if there are any residents who'd like to come forward to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda, you just state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to do so.
Todd people. Dan Butler, 35 Brookside Road, Southbridge. I guess I can, I don't even know where to go with this tonight, but I guess bear with me. I'm always, I come up here usually with kind of a purpose. I'm really frustrated at the moment. I've got a lot to say that won't take five minutes, so, I mean, it will take more than five minutes. But so, basically, this all boils down to Casella. Obviously, it's a big topic in town. I live at the base of the landfill with other neighbors. A lot of them are watching tonight that couldn't be here. We tried to get a couple to come. So basically, I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about problems I'm having, we're having, and at the end, I just got a couple of questions that we'd like cleared up, kind of, because we're hearing different stuff from all angles. Basically, it's been probably two years now, as you all remember, me coming up here quite often. I'll start off with the noise problems. And I know in the past, I invited any guys, anyone of you that want to come up in the morning and have breakfast at my house, starting about 5:30, and see for yourself the truck noise that we keep talking about. I do want to thank Councilor Manor. She's, you know, probably, I don't know, 50 emails back and forth over the last year, trying to work with me, trying to find a solution, because we're being told there's nothing we can do from the state as far as the engine brake noise on 169. I know I've told you guys in the past that, I guess, the landfill opens at, I don't know, 7:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m., I don't know what it is, but the trucks start coming 5:30 a.m. every morning, and now it's spring again. We're trying to open the windows, waking us all up first thing in the morning because they come down 169, which is a straight, flat road, no need for engine brakes, but they all think it's a great macho thing to reverse it, and, you know, we hear "baaah" for five minutes down the road. Pointless. But, so I've got that. Nothing's been done. I mean, no offense to Ms. Manor, she's tried. We talked to the landfill, actually, Stacy isn't up there, or Tracy? I guess they put a little sign up there for a little while to be kind to your neighbors. The truckers don't care. I mean, unless there's an actual law or sign on, you know, 169, it's a state road saying no engine brakes, nothing's going to be done. I've presently filed my own smell complaints here and there, and it always seems to pick up this time of year. It's not so much, I've kind of boiled it down, it's not so much from the landfill. What I've been trying to tell the landfill people is, it's the trucks. There's a lot, a lot of those trucks come, they don't, I don't think they ever wash those things. I mean, they'll come down. Some of them are nice. I think it's BMI Trucking. They have actually nice, quiet trucks. They're clean, I mean, very well, but some of them come, they look like they're, you know, mom and pop shop. They've got sludge hanging over the sides and stuff, and as soon as they start going up that hill, if we have a west wind, you smell it coming all the way, you know, as they're going up the hill. I've been dealing with my own personal problem with a recycling truck for over a year now. I've been calling Casella almost weekly, well, bi-weekly, we get a pickup. Just briefly, I'm not going to bore you, but we've got, we're the last road on the, I mean, the last house on the recycling route every other Friday, and this guy picks up my recycling bin at my driveway, and then he drives about 50 feet, maybe if that, down to, there's a bridge over Katy Brook, right on Brookside Road. He parks on that bridge every single, every other week when it's recycling bridge, which is against the law to park a truck on a small bridge like that tonnage-wise. And what he does is he sits there for a good 15 minutes. I've got video, I've got pictures I've sent to Casella. I've called our health inspector. I've called everything. Nobody seems to do anything, and Casella keeps promising he will take care of it. Last week, I got so fed up, I went out and talked to the driver myself, which I tried to contain myself, and I did pretty well. And, actually, this was two times ago, this past week, he was out there again. So they don't care. What he does is he sits there in the truck, he's at the end of the route. I don't know if he's reading a magazine or what, but he turns on, I guess, from what I found out from research, he's grinding up the plastic and stuff that's in the back, and then when it's all done, he continues on his way, I guess, where to dump it off at Casella or whatever. But the problem is, when he's grinding it all up, all the little shards of glass and plastic are coming out the cracks of the bed of the truck, and they're going all over the street. I've got pictures of little shards of glass and stuff, and I keep sending them to Casella, and what happens if I don't go out there and clean up myself, we get a heavy rain, it washes into my yard, and you guess what? You got Katy Brook right there. I keep telling them, "Do you want me to call the EPA?" I don't know what else to do. I've got that. I've got, this is crazy, I'm going to sound nuts, but this happened, and I've got it on my security camera. We had the trash guy two Fridays ago stole from us on the clock. Pulled up, I had a grill that I was putting out for some scrappers. They always come by and pick up stuff if it's metal. He went up, I watched it later on, because when I came home, my grill is still there, but all the metal and stuff was off of it. So I got a frame of a grill, so I watched. It was the trash guy. He came and picked up my trash, threw it in the truck, then he came back over, lifted the lid, started pulling out all the metal pieces out of it, went over, tucked them under some little compartment on his truck, and drove away. Never took the, I wasn't asking Casella to take the grill, but they, you know, if you're going to take the pieces from it, take the whole grill. So when I called Casella to complain, they told me, "Well, we can set up a bulk pickup." I said, "I don't want to schedule a bulk pickup." This shit, you know, this is, it's just getting frustrating. We got that.
Just about, just briefly. So you've hit the five. If you'd like, we can ask for the additional two.
Yes, if I could, please, and I'll try to talk quick.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay. I mean, I hate to sound like I'm beating a dead horse, but we found out, I guess, about the expansion or whatever, whatever's happening, and my point tonight is, if at the end of my speaking, if you could, somebody could tell us when there's going to be a meeting that we can come to, that we could speak out, you know, when, where, all that, because it's, you know, it kind of took us by surprise. I'm hearing there's a deadline Thursday for MEPA for the first stage or something. I know nothing about. But basically, to carry on with this, the fire last Thursday, that was actually the second fire now in about three weeks. This one, of course, was much larger. We heard the explosion early in the evening. The smell was so bad, burning rubber, burning plastic smell, I'm assuming, not plastic. It was mostly like a burning rubber, I guess, from a truck. I didn't know it was burning up there, but I got pictures and video of a gigantic black cloud. And of course, the wind was blowing from the west again, coming all down our neighborhood, and I had to put all the windows down in my house on a nice, gorgeous evening, and we could still smell it in the house for the next three days. I guess, I don't know if hot spots or whatever, whatever happens with a fire like that, but it was just lingering in the air. And I've got a two-year-old, and we're sitting here tonight talking about cancer and all these other things. How do we know what's in, whatever's burning it? My point is, all these things keep happening with Casella. All of us neighbors keep coming to talk. I mean, we can't seem to get here all at the same time, but we're all upset. We're all, you know, how can we trust Casella with more of our land when they're having trouble with what they got there now? We had the landslide that went into Charlton. We've got two fires now. They're not listening to anything we're saying complaint-wise. I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but if anybody else is having a problem, speak up. I mean, I'm just frustrated. And when I'm hearing about the Mackenzie property, if we start cutting those trees down and stuff, we need some kind of buffer, which is going to act like a filter around this landfill, or, you know, my family and everybody else around is, God knows what we're breathing in or whatever, when majority of the wind comes from the west, if you watch radar at all. So most of the time, we're always in the downwind of this, and they say they spray whatever, lemon scent up there or something supposed to make it better. It doesn't. Yeah, my two minutes is up. I apologize. Basically, if you guys could just tell us when, where, we can come listen, speak out. And also, before I leave tonight, our next meeting is June 1. If you guys could just remember, it's the fourth anniversary of the tornado. So, I'll shut up now. Thank you for listening.
Did anybody want to, I thought I heard some mumbled? Counselor Steve?
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Dan, for talking. I love it. One of the things that he's referring to is the fact that there is currently, the process for Phase 1 of the landfill expansion, the Mass Environmental Protection Act process is ongoing right now. And there was a discussion, I can't remember exactly what the phrasing was, but they had a gathering here in town hall, and they went up to the landfill to do a landfill to do a tour of it last, I think it was last week. Unfortunately, I was able to get there only at the tail end of it, because I was working that day. But I've got a copy of the, I've got a paper copy of the plans and an electronic copy. If anybody's interested in the, in their environmental notification forms, it's not exactly easy bedtime reading. But, and you might want to be able to see it, it probably would be better to see it on paper. You can get it at the town manager's office and a few other offices here in town. I can send you an electronic copy if you email me at counselorgus@gmail.com. And what, the basic summary for Phase One is that over the next several years, it calls for adding about nine acres of trash disposal around the edges of the current landfill. Over the, over, it'll also use space now occupied by Barefoot Road. Over the next, between now and 2030, if I remember correctly, it talks about discuss doing Phases Two to Four. Those aren't yet up for hearings. Most of them would require major site assignment, because they're talking about land that is not yet part of the landfill. It's not site assigned. In fact, in some cases, the McKinsey, with the McKinsey parcel, for example, it would require them to actually purchase the land, which is one of the things that we've been talking about in general government, among other things. So that's still up in the air as to where that stands. And so there's, there's a lot of details in there. I couldn't, can't possibly discuss it right here, because I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
But if you want copies, email me and I'll send it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
In regards to the meeting, I know this past week, I requested from the, our Akington Town Manager to schedule a meeting with Casella. It was said to us, I believe, when I first got on, that they would come in and do quarterly or every six months updates. And it's been a while. So, you know, and I know with a lot of the debate in regards to the McKinsey property, the fire, the landslide, there's still a lot of questions. So I am requesting a subcommittee meeting, which will be posted and will be usually either, I think it went, last time it was through general government. So if it's not general government, if it's not general government, it'll be a council of the whole. But we are, we are requesting a meeting with Casella. Not to discuss landfill expansion, but to give us an update where we are today and what's going on.
Okay.
So those concerns.
It's scary when you're hearing, you know, 50 different things coming in and
No, absolutely.
Thoughts, why I'm here, just to find out.
Again,
Appreciate it.
In regards to the McKinsey, everybody has their opinion on it. So, you know, you'll, if you ask for a councillor's opinion, you're going to hear nine different opinions. So it's better, easier to get the documentation, kind of look at what's in front of you and then base it on your opinion, because we're all nine different minds.
Okay.
But I can tell you, I don't want an expansion.
Appreciate it. Counselor Steves?
Thanks. Oh, one more thing I forgot to mention, that also, this Thursday at 6:30, the Conservation Commission is having a public hearing on a tiny faction of this Phase One expansion. It's, they're building some sort of a, it's, it's a, it's part of their stormwater project that's attached to Phase One. In the maps, it's labeled as part of Phase One. I'm not sure, clear, I'm not clear exactly where it's staying, stands in terms of why they're doing it now as opposed to after the MIPA process. But that, those are the kinds of questions that can be raised at that hearing. It's Thursday at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Just, you know, that we have had three general government meetings in the last month and a half or so on some, on some issues in terms of questions you, you and the neighbors may have. In terms of some of the things you mentioned, I would highly recommend that when, you said you, Casella hasn't responded on certain things, and landfill monitor, or this one, or that one. But the reality is, in, in issues of, of day-to-day, like some of the stuff you mentioned, I mean, you really need the Board of Health and talking to Mr. Pelletier. If you've got a specific about, say, the recycling truck or something, that would be, you have.
Yes, and I
You got no response, or you get a response?
He says he was going to look at, this last time I called, last week, he didn't even take my name or number when he hung up on me. So I'm like, how did, you know, I was telling him what's, what's going on with this. And I said, "Look, I talked to the driver last week, and then I called Casella again. I said, 'This needs to stop.'" And he said, "Okay, we'll, we'll look into it." And then he hung up. And I'm like, "He didn't take my phone number, my name, nothing. So how are you going to call me back?" You know?
Right, okay. Right. So, and that doesn't help, obviously, certainly, what you're doing, bringing it to us, so that we can bring it to a meeting where we can say, "Hey, Mr. Butler, come on down. There's going to be a representative there. You can, whether you'll get the answers you want, who knows? But certainly, there'll be someone to listen, and we'll all know that you're asking and we're hearing." I just want, in terms of your truck noise, too, you know, last year, or year, two years now, because you brought it to me.
Yeah.
I mean, I did petition the DOT directly, and I did, there was an orange sign. I believe it's still there. It says trucks entering. That was the most that they would do, or they did, and they cut down the tree so that people could see the entrance better, according to what I had understood. But the trucks entering sign wasn't exactly what I expected. I was hoping they would have put something more like landfill, but they did, a certain ways out, put a trucks entering sign. So, you know, but, you know, I did, did go through numerous channels as Ms. Manor, you know, so.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
So there are a number of things.
It's just, that doesn't tell the drivers.
But we, we don't have the right to tell 169 a state road either, so.
Well, like I said, a year ago, when I was up here, we, there's also laws for noise. And, I mean, we have bylaws and
I had one woman who lives on 169 tell me that the noise was better. An older lady from senior, from the senior center said, "Oh, the noise got better after that."
Until spring, when we open our windows.
I guess it all depends, yeah. But certainly, keep your eyes peeled for, for information in terms of meetings coming up and topics, so that, because you have to do that part. That's your responsibility to look and see what meetings are planned, and then we'll, and we'll do our thing and come on down and bring your concerns, so we can help you.
Okay.
We certainly want to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Are there any other residents who would like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? If so, again, just state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hello, once again, ladies and gentlemen of the House Bridge. I'm here and we are by the kids petition for a boys' club, girls' club, by the unit that and for the elderly and the unfortunate. I want to know, do I need a solicitor's permit? And I do have over 250 people, but a, somebody from the State Department is also signing. I think it's a good idea. We've got too many guardians, we're there too many. Are there yet? Can your daughter drive a car at three years old, or five years old? Can your daughter smoke cigarettes at seven, eight years old? I won't, we have a year round indoors with the bull. Let's get insensitive and selfish. Let's work together as a community. I want to learn each and every one of you. You may mock me, you may laugh at me, but deep inside, you go home, you say, "What is this guy doing? Where is he from?" That they're watching only thoughts and answer. And I'm asking each and every one of you. I want to know how to put in a petition. We don't need guardians, we don't need mechanics. We need our children safe. And we've got a boys' club, girls' club, and we know our children. You go to school, you can earn it. And then instead of insanity, just be one of you one day. So, I did want to know, can anybody commit any ideas? And I tell you right now, I'm very proud of Southbridge. The streets are trying to sway it down. The doors that are trying to have red flags around. And let's play with that young man, the children, like the officer said, that was unnecessary. But if we're working as a positive community, nothing can come in Southbridge that destroy it. I just want to say, wait a minute, Mr. Bede, we're all agreed, oh, the gentleman here, we're all agreed, the gentleman over here, we're not going to mess around in Southbridge. All it's on that, then each and every one of you, it leads me the right way to get a boys' club, girls' club. We have a lot of men that stay there doing nothing. And that made thing work, yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'll wait for you. I just want to be recognized.
Well, I'm, I'm almost done. I did want to know how to get, but they didn't go in. I have already 250 people waiting. But I'm not going to stop. I'm going to keep on going. And so, we get the children into a safe environment such as a boys' club, girls' club, and elderly. That's all I have today. I've had red each and every one of you. I know who's running out, run away from me. I do too, but I were human, amen.
Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Basset for coming up here and being part of the community and voicing your concerns. Thank you very much. Also, you mentioned a Boys and Girls Club. Have you spoken with State Representative Durant or State Senator Fatman in regards to funding, possibly, for a Boys and Girls Club in this area?
Well, I've been talking to a lot of you people on Facebook and Twitter. I, I all know, I've been touched with 25 news. What we need is sensitive for our children in Southbridge. Never mind guardians. How many of these guys are really certified? How many of these guys really are driving, fighting the rest on your car? We don't know. Where are our children? They're all playing video games and on a computer. When they can interact, get to know each other's neighbors, your son, your daughter. It's a lot better than on a phone, playing, you know, games on TV and stuff like that. I'm here for the children. That's all I'm asking. It's your job to find out where I know from here. And do I need a solicitor's permit? I will get one. I will go through all it's green. To see that it's done. I thank you very much. And I don't want it that one anybody told. I'm not a prominent board member. I did say anything on a forum. Wanting to know for the children. I don't know what you're looking out for, but I'm looking out for the children. Amen.
The only thing I wanted to add is, is that I believe there is a Boys and Girls Club in Webster, and I would suggest just reaching out to them to find what they may recommend for how to move forward as well.
I have other several people in Webster. I did not mention their names, right? I did not hear, let me up on it. They said if we can get the land, that they start from there. It's a land. Once you get the land, then we then get the permit to build. But the governor, he is not going to deny children. The president is not going to deny children. Are any of you? I don't think so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you all have a nice night. And I want to thank the E and D, Southbridge Hospital. The police department and all of you. We're working together. This place is turning out to be a much better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other residents who would like to come forward to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? If so, just state name and address, please.
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. Thank you, Gus, for mentioning about the ENF, the form that, that we're supposed to comment on for, about Casella. And the comments are due on May 22nd. I don't believe you mentioned that.
Thank you.
So, and Gus mentioned his email address, and you can call or email me. I have my, these things written down, if you don't want to listen to me. But it's emmydoyle, M-E-D-O-Y-L-E three, at yahoo dot com. And I can send an electronic copy. But please comment by May 22nd.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Pulaski. I live at 3 Genesee Street. And there's a lot going on in town. It's the unfortunate fatality. Someone's life was stolen from them. Just a lot going on. But just the people that are critical of the landfill, please don't be critical over just over a single fire, or even two fires. When those of us were criticizing the idea of bringing the landfill into the town, these are the types of things we were talking about. These happen no matter who is running the landfill. It could have happened if the town was running it. The real problems with that landfill isn't even usually the problem of the operator. It's a problem of sneaky people that don't want to pay, let's say, to properly get rid of some industrial waste, or some waste in their house that they know is not good, and they sneak it in. And then it gets in there, and then someone suffers down the road. You can't, it's very hard, especially in our legal system, to prove what they call causation. You know, so it's, you've got to have proof. You know, just because I was up here seven, eight years ago, saying we shouldn't have a landfill, because it increases, first, stomach cancer, second, bladder cancer. Ironically, today, I did absolutely no contact with the Lions Club. Esophageal cancer. They're all in that tract. That's what, that's what, the cancers that tend to come from landfills, and they come from all landfills, whether they're lined or not lined. Our landfill, people, I remember people say, "We got a landfill anyway." Sturbridge's landfill is unlined. The thing is, their landfill is, their landfill in a year is, they're allowed to dump as much in a year as we are allowed to dump in a day. That gives you an idea of the scale. Hundreds of times bigger. But something Counselor Steves mentioned, something that Maureen Doyle mentioned, now, I'm going, I'm up here a lot. What have I been up here? Maybe 40 times over the last seven years about the landfill. Some of you listen to me, some of you listen a little more than others. Some of you in the past have gone out of the way to tell them you don't listen to me at all. And that's okay. That's part of America. We get to say what we want, and we get to listen to what we want to listen to. But I know, when I write to Mass EPA or MIPA on this MIPA study, I will probably accomplish more in the 10 or 20 minutes it takes me to email them than all the times I've come up here. A big decision is being made. A big decision very soon. And for example, Mr. Butler, he could have come up here, who was a gentleman speaking a little earlier, about the problems of being closer to the landfill. I'm lucky. I live over by Woodstock Road. Very seldom do I experience anything from the landfill in my neighborhood. I used to, many years ago, when the leachate from the landfill would sometimes go into the sewer plant. Something that was denied later, but we have some town files that prove it used to happen. A former predecessor of the current EPW wrote a letter to Mr. Carlisle, said it had to stop, and it did. And there are things that are brought to people's attention, and sometimes bad things stop. They can be stopped. But if anyone is really against the landfill, even more important than the checks that people wrote, when we needed money for the legal fees and the, and the copying of paperwork during that lawsuit, is a letter, or email, it's probably too late for a letter now, to MIPA. Now, Counselor Steves has offered his address. I was going to give the address of the lady, her name is Paige. I'm going to just say her, spell it, P-A-G-E dot C-Z-E-P-I-G-A at state dot mass dot U S. And just let her know your experience. If you love the landfill, tell them why you love the landfill, too. Let's be fair. But if there are reasons you don't like it, you're concerned about your community's health, please be kind enough just to take a few minutes to write to Paige and tell her it's about this barefoot landfill in Southbridge. And, because this MIPA, this next step, they're looking for a waiver where they can get away with putting in landfill in places that many of us are concerned, it does not appear to be site assigned. When you look at the applications, they're not consistent with other applications that were put in back when we had our minor site assignment.
Mr. Pulaski.
Okay. Five minutes are up, and that's all I needed to say. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. But if you're going to do anything, please get the address from Counselor Steves. A simple, I bet you a half dozen emails could make a difference on this. Thank you.
Do we have any other residents who would like to come forward for anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Vote to Accept the Warrant for the Town Local Election on Tuesday, June 30, 2015.
No more.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please. Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Counselor Manor?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Palaquin?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to transfer $478,311.66 to the fiscal year 2015 snow and ice accounts for the following accounts. Stabilization Fund, $200,000. Landfill Royalty Fund, $278,311.66. This should require a two-thirds vote.
No move.
Second.
Counselor Vecchia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chairman to the town accountant, Karen. Two questions, Karen. Mrs. Hannoyes. Stabilization Fund and the Landfill Royalty Fund, what are the balances in there now?
Through the chair. The balance in the stabilization is $2,583,000. And the balance in the landfill royalty, $1,339,000.
You knew I was going to ask those questions. Thank you very much.
Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, too. Acting town manager and full-time CFO. Are we filling out paperwork to get reimbursed for this through the state?
I can't hear you.
Are we filling out paperwork to get reimbursed for this through the state? I know Governor Baker went and he got some money from FEMA. Not all that he wanted. He's working on that still, but I know there is reimbursement. So are we, the town, are we doing that to get reimbursed on this?
Is that part of this question?
Yes, if I could. Last week, we attended a kickoff meeting at the DPW. The DPW, myself, the school, and the fire department, the police couldn't make it. So we were all there and we went through the different paperwork. Of course, we've done this type of reimbursement request before. So we will be putting all the information together. And right now, as you know, they've only declared the January snowstorm and we need to isolate a 48-hour period. And then we're going to put in for reimbursement up to 75% of the costs. So this basically will cover the deficit. And then anything that comes back in will be returned to the general fund and at that point either to the stabilization or whatever the council chooses at that time. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Ten. Vote to ratify the discriminatory harassment policy as presented by Maya and include said revisions in the town's personnel rules and regulations.
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for phosphorus removal and sludge de-watering at the wastewater treatment plant for a total fee of $275,440 and to transfer the amount from sewer retained earnings.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Vecchia and then Counselor Steves.
Again, through the chairman to town accountant, Mrs. Hannoyes. What is the balance of the sewer retained earnings account?
The balance in the sewer retained earnings is $1,85140. And that was the amount that was certified. And this would be the first transfer from that amount.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, just one point is that I believe that this should actually read for, it should be, that it should be, it's for engineering for phosphorus removal. The removal itself would be a much larger project.
It's engineering services.
It's engineering services. They're not removing this stuff.
Counselor?
The word before removal, what is?
Phosphorus.
What does it mean? I don't know what it means.
It's in there.
MCAS is coming up.
It's on from my discharge. Basically phosphorus is what helps clean your clothes, but we can't discharge it to the streams. So, that help you at all? It's a chemical that we have to remove.
Is he, sooner we got it, is he corrected what he said?
It is just for the engineering services. The engineering, this is the engineering services of this project. The total cost for the phosphorus and sludge de-watering is about $2.4 million.
Oh, whoa. Stay right there. Have we already paid for that or?
No, we have not already paid for that. That's in next year's capital budget plan.
It's going to come out of the capital budget?
It's in the capital budget plan for the, we'll have to borrow for it next year for in the, for the sewer budget. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just one question to Mrs. Hannoyes. What is that going to be? 20 years, 30 year loan? If we're going to borrow that money?
We put 20.
The bond, whatever we get.
Yes, that sounds about right. Probably around 20 years. Probably 20.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hello, sir.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments?
Just not to leave the public wondering. If you may recall, there was a documentary of some sort, a movie done about the wastewater treatment plant last year or so. It ran on cable access for a while. We have actually asked Mrs. Blakely to get that back up for us if possible so that she'll understand some of the problems that we face here in the community in terms of making sure that our wastewater meets the standards set by the state and the federal government and such in terms of discharge to our rivers. We currently have some very dire equipment or processes that could fail at any time. And we've been pretty much mandated by the state to make these corrections before we have something really bad happen. The sludge de-watering, for instance, and that's one of the big ones that we looked, that we were seeing, some of us toured that. The public was invited a number of times. So there has, this has been a very open process for the community. And I applaud the wastewater treatment plant and Mrs. Blakely for allowing us to, to get a lot of answers as a council. But sludge de-watering, if we are down to this one train of squishing out all the liquids to send out dry sludge, I guess is what we would call it. And if we, if that breaks down with the old machinery we have, it could be up to $20,000 a week or so for the transport of this, which obviously if you do the math, it could be quite, quite dire to our, to our accounts. So there's a lot of things going on. It sounds like a lot. We were shocked by the number for engineering services ourselves in the subcommittee meeting, but it is a process that it's very complicated and the engineers will soup to nuts it and get it right down to, to the bid process for us. And then eventually we'll take on the burden of, of actually fixing the problem. So this is the first step, which is necessary. So I just wanted to kind of point some of that out from the meeting we had with DPW, Counselor Vandal's Subcommittee, and again, say thanks to really understanding what we need to do as a community for the future of our wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Manah?
Shall we change? Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Should we change the wording in the agenda?
Are you offering a friendly amendment?
I think Counselor Steve should do that. Seems like he's the one that actually noticed.
Yeah. So what, how would you like it worded?
I'm just, I'm just, as a, okay, a friendly amendment to say that after Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for engineering for phosphorus removal and blah blah blah.
Engineering services?
Services.
I don't think, I don't think we necessarily need to be able to do the whole vote on that if it's a friendly amendment. So.
Right. That's why I asked for the friendly. Any other questions, concerns?
Is that going to read engineering services?
Yeah. He would be, he would be inserting after the term incorporated for engineering services.
Thank you. It's very hard to hear over here sometimes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for BioTower Upgrade Preliminary Design and System Bypass Design for the wastewater treatment plant for a fee of $49,750 and to transfer the amount from sewer retained earnings.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Counselors' Form. And we'll start with Counselor Steves.
Actually, I pretty much already addressed all this stuff. I was going to address it a while ago. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchia?
Thank you very much. I just have one item I'd like to discuss. Through the chairman to, again, the town accountant, this was put in our packet, this management letter. Well, I went over this management letter and I've seen these kind of reports since I went to Bentley College in the 60s. And I've seen many, many reports. I don't, I don't feel this is a good report. I don't, I don't really want to start criticizing tonight, but to begin with, it doesn't have any figures here. It doesn't show anything on the balance sheet, Carrie. I mean, usually on a management report, you have, they show the balance, the balance sheet.
If I could. Well, actually, that, that is the management letter that gives the recommendations from the auditors where improvements can be made, where things are being done. Did you get a copy of the audit itself? That will have all the financial information in it.
That's great. That's what I, that's what I thought this was because, well, I stand corrected. I, I don't have a copy of the audit. I've been asking for it for about, I've been asking for it for about six, I've been asking for it for about six months. Because we got, the last time we got it was in March, okay? So this was, was given to me. And some firms, when you get a management report, like the firm I worked for, it includes all the audit, okay? Because it's state's audit. So I don't have it. In fact, I asked the town manager two or three times lately, where's that report? Because we got it last year in March. I wasn't on a council, but we got it in March. And it's almost the end of May. So I don't have it. So that goes with this. That's what you're telling me.
Yes. I will check with the town manager's office. I did give enough bound copies to be given to each council member. So I will make sure.
When did you give it out?
I'm going to say maybe I've had it for a month or so.
Yeah, at least a month.
At least, yes.
Well, that's what I thought this was because I said to myself, what is this? This is, this is recommendations that go with it. Is it the same firm?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, that's another question. And the only one other thing about this report, two questions. The one is, this report, the letter is dated March 25th. So it's almost two months later before we've even gotten this. Why do we have to wait two months to get it? I know it isn't you, but I'm just saying, this letter is dated March 25th and it's almost May 25th. Why didn't we get it two months after this letter was written?
Well, I think there's a little bit of time that lapses too. Like we finalized it on that day. And then they have to do all the bound copies and send them to us. And like I said, I've had it for a little while, but I will definitely follow up to make sure that the copies are given to each councilor. Does, do the other counselors have copies of the management letter or just Counselor Vecchia?
We don't have the audit.
Okay.
Nobody has the audit. Is that correct? Do you have the audit?
I don't have the audit.
Okay. But then I have one more question about this. On the counts receivable, the counts receivable, what is it? $800,000 in the billing? Ambulance receivable. It says that the billings have gone from increases from $660,000 to $860,000. And my question, and then they say that is in goods to have all that money. That's what it's saying here. Well, my point is that a lot of these, any of these or a lot of these delinquent, I'm asking.
If I can. We recently put together a policy where our new ambulance billing company will, will do a write-off. I don't know if it's every, every 12 months, and that will be the policy where they'll do that. There was a lapse in time where some of the amounts were not written off. Because there's some amounts that Medicaid can't be billed for.
Okay. Well, you, you, I'm sure you're going to give me a fine write-up on this, a detailed report on this sooner or later. What I'm saying to you is, I'd like a breakdown of this at some, some point.
Okay, on that particular item?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What is not collectible and what is outstanding. But I'm not picking. You're doing a very good job. Plus, what I was going to say tonight, I have your report on your budget report, how much money has been spent so far this year?
Yes.
And it's excellent. It's beautiful. I wish I could get this from the school department. And hopefully next term, we'll get this report from the school department monthly too. That's what I'm hoping for. Because they should be giving us this. You keep on asking us for money, but they don't even tell us where they're spending the money. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Vandal?
Thank you. I wish, I, how am I going to, I wish everybody a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the Lions for coming forward with this important information on esophageal, on esophageal cancer. It kind of hits home a little bit because we had a fairly close family member in the past couple of years get diagnosed at stage four. And lucky to say that he is now in the 3.4% or so that is making a recovery at this point, even though it was inoperable. And it was a long haul, but he appears to be, like I said, in one of those lucky ones. So, and again, symptoms were ignored, not ignored by the doctor, but symptoms were thought to be something else, a sore throat, maybe strep throat, maybe something. So, which went on for about a year before he'd gotten tired of waiting and went to the doctor, went to another doctor and was diagnosed immediately. Doctor looked into the throat and just said, you have a problem here. So if you have a problem, as they said tonight, you know, go get it checked out. Make sure that you're being your own advocate and you're not just letting something go on the wayside. Again, thanks to the Lions for making sure that we're a more informed community. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not coming today. Only happy Memorial Day weekend on the citizen and God bless you.
Thank you. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do have a couple of things tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the fire department for the work they did over the weekend on Everett Street. I heard the fire horns go off and I was like, oh my goodness. And it turned out to be a three alarm fire. Thankfully, no one got hurt. Our fire department, I'd like to thank, the, the surrounding fire departments that came in. And I'd also like to thank the wives of some of the firemen who, where I ran on social media, because yes, I am a social media buff. They, they went into action and they, they brought water and they brought food down to the fire station. So just to make sure that the firefighters, they, you know, they were hydrated and they had, they had food for energy. And so I just want to thank everyone for a job well done. It's unfortunate that the fire did happen. Thankfully, no one was hurt. But this is what our tax dollars go for, a full-time fire department and a full-time police department that protect us. Okay, second. This might be a long one, so bear with me. I'm going to bring up the school. Yes, the school. I went to Tuesday meetings, school committee meeting to try and speak to the, the school committee on an agenda item in regards to a search committee. And I also want to talk about some other things. But I wasn't recognized. After about 20 minutes standing up there at the podium, I finally had to ask, am I going to be recognized or is anybody going to be recognized to speak on this agenda? And we were told no. And that was very disappointing because we're a community. We have a voice. I was going up there as a counselor and as a citizen. I won't hide that. I'm very concerned for our town. I'm concerned about our school being on level four still. I'm concerned about our school committee not, not voting for a superintendent's search. And I'm very disappointed in the excuses that I heard. I heard some contradictory. I heard some contradicting talk, too, with the gentleman, Mr. Kuchar, from MASC, I think that's who it is. And when we sat up here with the school committee from the DESE, the DESE at that time told us that any superintendent would love to come into this community and have that challenge, and we should start doing the search, that's, or they should start doing the search. That's how I took it. And then I listened and I watched the town school committee when Mr. Kuchar was up here about a month ago, and he said, no, you need stability in this school, and now is not the time to do a search committee for a superintendent, you should do a search committee between such and such a time. Where if you go back and read some of Mr. Kuchar's stories, if you go back in the Boston Globe in December of 2014, he actually contradicted himself that night, too, on another story he told the media. So you know what? I don't really trust Mr. Kuchar, and that's my honest opinion on that. You know, and it's very disappointing. Level four school district for how many years? How much longer do our children have to suffer? How much longer do the taxpayers in our community have to suffer, and our businesses in the community have to suffer? When you have a level four district, it's not running well. It affects everyone, the kids, the taxpayers, everyone. It just trickles on down, and it's going to explode. And you know, I'm to the point where I'm hearing other people, not only myself, because yes, I have said this, it's time for the state to come in and do something. I mean, they would have it. If the state came in and took over, my feeling is that the school committee would have to do exactly, and the superintendent and the principals, exactly what the state said. And I am very disappointed in them not doing the search committee, forming the search committee, holding back on that. It was very disappointing. And it's about time this community starts thinking about the kids and everything else that goes along with it, because the kids are the future of this community and other communities. And no, I'm not done. I apologize. I just like, it's just very upsetting to me. And then to have no discussion on it, and not to let the community come up and speak. There were two other people after me sitting there wanting to speak on this also. And it's just, it is very, very, very disappointing. And you know, we have a school committee up there. The longest the members have been, they go from three years right down to a year and two years, two years and a year. So we don't have a strong school committee up there. And we don't have a strong superintendent either. The superintendent was a principal at one time. She wasn't the superintendent. This is her first superintendent job. I'm not saying that she's a bad person, but this is a level four school district. We need somebody stronger than less than a year's experience. And they talk about stability, well, where the heck has the stability been? Since Mr. Ely, now, I was never for Mr. Ely. He should never have gotten hired, that's my own opinion. We had Wood and Cattaldo, those were in the running, and I, for one, thought that one of those two would get selected, but they didn't. So we ended up with Ely, who ended up getting a year's contract, and then getting fired, then we get Buzz, and then he's interim superintendent, then he's let go, or he's out because he's sick, and then we get Pat Gardner, and then Pat Gardner's let go, now we got Cheryl Stanton. And now they want to do restructuring. And then there's all this controversy about people getting fired and people being asked to resign, and then all of a sudden, they take it back, and now they're doing this restructuring. Well, to me, it looks like retaliation. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Peliquin?
I was surprised from what you didn't bring up in your report that you'd mentioned.
I was waiting for you to do that. I spoke enough.
Okay. Well, in this report, if you look at the top of page three, there's some interesting information about our tax levying, and I just want to make sure that everybody reads this report. I know we get a lot of stuff every week, and not everybody reads all of it, but I'd like, and I'm not going to read all of it, because there's too much of it, but the people who are advising us are telling us that we should be maximizing the usage of available tax levy capacity to provide real financial resources in the present that can be used to fund capital or other long-term obligations, such as pension and OPEB, that if not funded or partly funded today, will effectively delay the inevitable funding and payment of those costs into the future. It goes on to say, while it is true that the town cannot lose the ability to tax up to its maximum accumulated levy capacity in future years, the same is true that any unutilized levy capacity in any single or multiple years represents lost cash that is not being utilized to fund known and real obligations of the town today. Accordingly, a strong budget management strategy would encourage the appropriation of all available revenues in order to presently begin addressing those areas of financial need and the preservation of town assets and infrastructure, and to not lose the utilization of monetary resources that on an annual budget basis cannot be recovered in the future. And I realize that this is an opinion that I'm currently in the minority in, maybe because I'm not running for reelection this year, but I think not levying any new property taxes is a really bad idea, given our crumbling infrastructure in town. We have 60 buildings that need to be torn down, that are not getting torn down. We have a school that is floundering, and I just feel like this is not the year to refrain from levying any new property taxes. I mean, I'm not saying we should go up to the levy limit every year, I'm a taxpayer as well, but there's some really big needs in town that are not being addressed this year, because we all wanted to say we didn't raise taxes. And that's a very nice thing to say, but we have crumbling infrastructure on many levels, and I want to make sure that you read this report, because I think these people are looking at the big picture, not just a three-year election cycle, and they see that we have a lot of unmet needs, and we need to help ourselves as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First, I just want to congratulate the committee that came together to form a scholarship committee in the honor of Jamie Ortiz, who passed away earlier this year, excuse me, last year, late last year, and today's actually his birthday. And they actually formed a forever pioneer organization, and they did a three-on-three basketball tournament. They had over 100 participants come out to play, and they had over 150 people in attendance at the old high school. It was an awesome event in his memory, and also they were able to raise a good amount of funds to be able to do an athletic scholarship to athletes of our Southbridge Middle High School that are graduating. So I just want to congratulate the whole committee and the parents for allowing that to happen in Jamie Ortiz's memory. It was a great event, and we look forward to it next year again. The other thing, Counselor Manah was, mentioned the schools, and I've been very vocal, and I don't shy away from being vocal. I think when I ran, I said, people need to be held accountable. Unfortunately, our schools are not a level four school, and I want to make sure we, our community knows that. Our schools are a level three school, but our district is our level four. And it's there because of the instability of our district, the instability of our school committee, the inability of our school committee, best said. I, yes, I was here on Tuesday night, because I was interested in regards to what's happening with our superintendent's search. You know, they have a spot in their agenda, every agenda, update on the superintendent's search, update on the superintendent's search, and the update has been really none. So this, you know, of course, through the rumourville, there was information given that there was going to be some type of vote in regards to the superintendent's search to start the process, in which I was very excited, because being the chairman of the town manager's search, I'm saying this is a perfect time to have two new faces come into our community and begin to work together, not have somebody stay here and maybe six, three months, six months down the road, be gone, because unfortunately, that is the reputation of our school committee, that these one-year contracts end up being buyouts. So it's very frustrating. I was one of the citizens slash town councilors that were ready to speak and ask questions, because yes, it is being mentioned that, you know, the chairman and the vice chair went to the newspapers. Yes, we did. And we went to the newspapers for the better of our community, because, again, they wanted to sweep it under the rug and not do anything again. They wanted to rubber stamp something that is not working. Honestly, I'm to the point where I'm ready to do, if somebody would entertain a motion, a zero confidence, a no-confidence vote on the school committee. Because what other message are we going to send? Money is not going to fix it. Counselor Peliquin, levying taxes to give the schools more money is not going to fix it. They promised us when they went to community schools that they were going to provide our children with stability, that the principals would be there, teachers would be there, that the kids would know each other. Well, I got kids in the district, and my son has had two or three different principals. So solving that, giving more money to the schools, is not the answer. We went to school, elementary, and at no point in time was there ever a vice principal. What's the need? What's the need? Buffing up management? Again, holding people accountable. We give you money, yes, that's our duty. We've been told that right in this podium. Yes, you guys sign off on the final check, you guys vote the budget. Absolutely, we do. That is what we got elected to do. But at the same time, what else can we do? I mean, our hands are tied, massive, the Reform Act, we can't do anything but sign the check. But in reality, if we don't go to the newspapers, if we don't go to their meetings, and we don't try to voice our concerns, I was told today that our school choice bill is going to triple, because Dudley, Dudley Charlton just opened up more spots, and a whole bunch of kids and parents from our district are signing up. It's a never-ending story, unfortunately, but something needs to be done, and money is not the problem. When you have administrators, top administrators of a central office of reorganization, when they didn't want to do it, when they built the school, or they did it 30 days before, it's going to, and now we're going to do it? A reorganization that was never included in the budget? So what, when they do the reorganization, they're going to come to us asking for more money? Where's their thinking? Where's the logic? These are things that, if they want to do a restructuring, they should have thought of this in September and brought it toward the budget season now, because this restructuring is not even included in the budget. So I really don't understand what's going on on that side. I've tried to be involved, and I remain positive, because it's not the schools. The principals are working hard. Principal Earls was at the basketball tournament. She's at almost every single event that that school puts on. Mr. Regan, he's at every single event that that school puts on. Mr. Latoy, the same thing, Ms. Scripps, it's not the principals, it's the administration, it's the school committee. And we want to continue to rubber stamp one-year contracts, delay the search. Why? Why? I've heard from numerous sources and candidates themselves tell me, yes, I would be interested in applying for superintendent. So this baloney that superintendents won't come here, don't believe it, because there's several people that would put in that are interested and qualified to lead our district. But feeding them money is not the answer. We need to hold people accountable. And if this council does not, I mean, this is a time where we have to send a clear message and be united, and say, you know what, the school committee needs to get their act straight. And who cares that elections are in a month? Because they're going to make some key decisions before election season that will continue the path of destruction or lead us in a better way. But delaying a search committee, a superintendent's search is going to lead us a better way? Restructuring schools, when it's not included in the budget that they presented to us? So what, on Wednesday night, they're going to come with another, a fourth, fifth amendment of their budget to include the restructuring? Because I mentioned it? It's uncalled for. What we need to do is hold people accountable. We need to call it out and say, you know what, we don't have confidence in the school committee. Because obviously, what's so hard about doing a search?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we draft a letter of no confidence in the school committee and send it to the state, the school committee, and the town manager, and whomever else we have to send it to. But I would like it to be known that there were three people that did want that search.
All right. I agree, but unfortunately, if we cannot unite...
I'm in total agreement with you, Counselor Carrasco, and I made the motion.
So the motion on the floor, pending a second, is to draft a letter stating a no-confidence vote by the town council and send that letter to the state DESE?
DESE, MASC, school committee, superintendent, town manager.
Okay. Counselor Vecia?
I have all the confidence in the world in the principals.
She said in the school committee.
The school committee.
Because I got all the confidence in the world in the principals.
I agree. I agree. And that's something that I said, Counselor Vecia.
And I think some of them are getting railroaded.
By the way, if we're going to debate it, you want a second first anyways?
Okay, go ahead.
So is there a second?
I second it.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion?
Again, this is a method of accountability, sending a message, a clear message, that this council is united to move our school district forward, and you know what? Start the search process. How is that so difficult? Why are we going to wait? You voted, they voted in January to start the search, and nothing has been done. Let's get somebody in here that has experience. And again, it's not against Mary Stanton, the acting superintendent.
Cheryl Stanton.
Cheryl, excuse me. Mary is the principal at Eastford Road. It's not against her. If she's qualified, apply. Go through the process. But the excuse that we get that their history in the past of searches were done wrong, well, that's, the school committee has the choice to change history. They have the choice to make sure history does not repeat itself, because they're the elected body. If they want to say and continue to talk about history, change it.
Counselor Steves?
Well, I don't think any of us have any objections to whether or not they decide, well, having them do a search or not, that's not our prerogative as town council. They are an elected body. We may or may not like what they're doing, but I don't think that this is our place to be giving them a no-confidence issue at this time. First of all, this is also a violation of the open meeting law, because this should have been on the agenda if this was going to be an issue. We should put, if we really want to do this as a vote, as a no-confidence, we should put it on an agenda for another meeting. Because that was not expected to come up at all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a couple of things on Counselor Steves' comments. We can make motions up here. It doesn't have to be on an agenda. We can make motions, and they can be first, second, or they don't have to be, but they do not have to be on an agenda. Second, we, as a town council, have an obligation to this community. And with our school district being in the level that it is, and the disarray that it is, it's affecting our children. My neighbor today just told me about two of her grandchildren. They've had multiple... They've had multiple teachers and principals, they're, they're tired of things, and one's in the middle school, one's in the high school. I've heard from other people within the community, I've heard from people outside the community asking me, what's going on there? We, as a town council, have an obligation to this, our community, to ensure that the children are being taken care of correctly, that, you know, our tax dollars aren't just going to waste. We need to bring businesses in, we need to bring people in to our community. And one of the first things that a lot of people look for when they're buying a home or looking to rent a place, even if it's just for a year or two, is the school district. And if they're not doing their job, and we're not holding them accountable, as Councilor Carrasco says, we're really not doing our job for the community, for the good of the community. So I totally disagree with you, because the fact of the matter is, we can make a motion on anything. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. It doesn't have to be known to be on the agenda. That's all, thank you.
Councilor Steves?
Part of holding them accountable is the budget issues that we, we have yet to decide, first of all. Secondly, holding them accountable is actually primarily up to, we would hold them accountable as voters, and the voters in June will hold up some of them accountable, I'm sure. The issue there is, that is something that we, we as, as councilors, we do handle, we handle the budget, obviously. We have, obviously, we have interests in what goes on in the schools, and we should all of, what you just said, I primarily agree with. I just don't think that this is the, I don't think this is the look, the time or the form to do this at this point. Maybe, maybe we should consider doing that.
How much longer do we wait? Well, to the floor.
Sorry. Maybe we should consider doing this. However, I would like some time to think about it. I don't like having something like this thrown at me at the end of a meeting.
Councilor Vecia?
I second it. That doesn't mean I would vote for it, and I'll explain to you. I agree with Gus, Councilor Steves, that this isn't a time, because there are three school committee members. You couldn't get a better school committee member than Jill Condon, she's doing a great job. She's on the minority. Dr. Page and Mr. Olivo, they're on the minority, but I like the three of them. I think that all three of them are doing a very good job, so if I was to vote for this, I would be voting for no confidence, confidence for those three people, and I have confidence in those three people. So what I would like to do is wait to July, and then we'll vote, once there's a new school committee. Well, I'm just saying, I, I'm up in the air tonight about this.
Also?
Thank you.
Councilor Carrasco?
Unfortunately, this is not a vote to single out each member. Unfortunately, it's the action of the whole school committee, though two, three are the minority. What took place is disgusting. What took place is not moving our town forward. So unfortunately, yes, I'm glad that there were three members, and I wish there was one more, but unfortunately, we are not there. And if we continue to stay silent, we went to the papers, and guess what happened? The next meeting, they voted to start the search, and here we are, almost in June, and when is it starting? So maybe if we do this as a committee, maybe they'll get a message, and they'll say, you know what, let's, let's get our act together for the best of our community. And this is not, again, this is a reflection of our whole community, this is a reflection of what we're gonna have. How much longer do we wait when our school choice bill goes three times higher next year? Where's that money coming from? Right here. So we're gonna wait again? We're cutting our town budgets, we're giving them an increase, and they're not happy? We had a murder, and we cut the police budget. Our streets are not even, our streets are not even in drivable conditions on some roads. Our fire department, short staff and fighting fires. But our school department's gonna keep playing with money, play the monopoly game. I build a house over here, put this guy in a mansion, give this one a raise, come on. We need to stop, we need to hold people accountable. It's not easy to do, it puts us all in a very tough spot. You don't agree? The motion's out here, you can say no. That's all I got to say on this.
Council Pelican?
I feel completely unprepared to take a vote of this nature this evening.
I can't hear, I can't hear you.
I feel completely unprepared to take a vote of this nature this evening. This is the first time I'm hearing about this issue. I think that you've been meeting law states that anything that can be reasonably expected to be on the agenda should be on the agenda. I understand the nuances there, but I don't feel comfortable being surprised by this at the end of a meeting and being expected to vote on it. I just, I don't feel comfortable.
Any other questions or comments at the moment?
I didn't hear what she said.
She does not feel comfortable at this time, based on not having heard about the issue and it being brought forward at this time. Councilor Steves?
One thing I have, I think there's a, I think there's two different things going on here. One is that we have, that Councilor Carrasco is proposing a no-confidence vote, which is a blanket statement of disapproval, whereas what, what I think, I think a lot of us might agree with this, is something that we would encourage them, that we can send on them a letter encouraging them to actually start a search, which is a, which is a different issue. I mean, I have no problem with starting, with them starting a search, but it's really their, it's their call. They are elected officials. We do have the responsibility to keep tabs of what's going on, and, and we will, I'm sure we will talk about this in EHS. I have no doubt about it. But I've already said what I, I basically already said what Council Pelican said earlier, so.
I just wanted to, I'll add my own, that, as I've kinda jotted down my thoughts as we've gone along, and, and the first of which is the same thought I had last Tuesday night, sitting in the back of the room for the school committee meeting, and, and that was just befuddled, is the word that was kinda my word of the day for that meeting. And, and a number of people had asked me questions or talked to me about that meeting and what's going on, and, and as, as verbose as I sometimes am, I just kind of was at a loss for words repeatedly. As it works out this particular time around, there are no incumbents to hold accountable in terms of election. We have some familiar faces, we have some new faces, we have all the different dynamics of, of, you know, party line, or, or, you know, not true party line, but, but cliques and proxies and puppets and so forth. We are, or the school department is, or should, of right ought to be, searching for a leader for the district, not simply a, a missing set of car keys. I too, you know, referencing an experienced and qualified individual from a pretty highly-regarded school district, and since then, I know firsthand, I've, I've spoken with an individual who's also a veteran of, of a very highly-regarded school district, who has expressed that they would be interested in the position as well. And yet, in recent months, the, the mantra has been that nobody would come here, aside from the DESE, who, you know, if, I was sitting, I think, right where Councilor Steves was when I had asked a question to that effect, and the gentleman representing DESI stated that, you know, coming from West Springfield, he would love this kind of a job, if not for his current position, and any superintendent worth a lick would, would also as well. We've got this recently proposed restructuring of the Southbridge Middle High School, which is to revert back to what they originally did three years ago, which was changed on a whim politically, and now reverting back to that same sort of, of thing, to the point that even school committee members voiced frustration with not being, you know, kinda learning about that proposal along with everybody else. And it's, it's not something that was part of that budget. So we are here, a week from Memorial Day, really right up on top of a budget deadline, making a fundamental change to the structure, which one can quite reasonably assume is going to have a fundamental change in their budget request and budget needs. A second principle is a whole other set of costs, a whole other salary item. And as much as there was a time, perhaps even when, when, when some of us were first elected, that the politics was, was quite rife up here, the school side, it seems to have taken it to quite another level. And at this point personally, the, I started off this year, this, this current governance year, if you will, back in July, you know, I supported the, the leadership of the school committee when they ran, supported them afterwards, supported them when they were made leadership. And I'm not going to cast judgment on them as individuals, but in terms of performance and transparency and, and cooperation, I've been, personally anyways, I've been quite disappointed. And really, at this point, I have no faith in the school committee as a whole, in the central office as a whole. Certainly, there are bright spots, there are people in there that are doing their best, and I'm sure all of them believe they're doing their best, I would hope. And I can tell you, as an educator, working in a school nearby, working in a school slightly further away, in both cases, I'm asked about Southbridge. I've been asked, almost with an, with a, with an incredulous tone, you would never work there, would you? People see the turnover at the central office level with superintendents, finance directors, principals, and it's really become a problem. There's some that, I've caught some flack from some, because several months ago, I referenced the, the school side as, as being in a death spiral, and I stand by that. I know it's not popular, but it's, it's how I perceive it to be the truth. And for the school committee, in my mind, sitting in those seats last week, six days ago, to on one hand, stress the need for stability, which is evident, which is clear, and yet, and use that as, as an impetus for extending the acting superintendent and kicking the can down the road in terms of a search for the next superintendent, permanent superintendent, presumably for an entire year, based upon their, their actions, while that provides some sort of stability in central office, at the same time, a complete and radical restructure of your flagship building where the majority of your students are, is, is quite unstable. And of those two places, not to, to downplay the importance of a superintendent by any means, but of those two places, when it comes to stability for the students, where they recognize that stability is, is where they are, 180 days out of the year, from 7:00 AM to 2:00 in the afternoon. It's not sitting on Cole Avenue. I would imagine if you were to poll your average high school student, never mind the elementary and the, even the middle school kids, but just your average high school student, I would wager at least 75% couldn't tell you who the superintendent is, what her name is. Granted, with the, the hot potato game that it's been up there, it could change every other day anyways. So that, that's part of my problem, is you've had, you have a, a need for stability, and we're trying to be stable in one spot, remote to an extent, and creating a whole other type of instability elsewhere, without having studied it. The state's coming in in October to study that high school, that middle high school. It would seem to me that the, the appropriate thing would have been to, if you want to propose that, wait till that's done, see if the state suggests that anyways, and start working on it. I don't think late May is the appropriate time to start talking about a radical change to your, your buildings a few months later. I don't, the turnaround time is, is insane. And as far as the search, you know, we've, on the town side, we've gone through, we're on our, technically, kind of our third search for a permanent town manager. First time we put on hold out of good faith, due to a referendum vote that would've radically changed our town government. We certainly didn't want to interview people and put people in positions where they may be becoming public as finalists for a position that may no longer exist several months later. Second time around, the pool, while the number was large of candidates, the, the quality was not so deep. And now this last time around, current time around, not as many candidates, but the depth is just markedly twelve-fold better. Is that timing? Is it firm? Is it circumstances changing? Who knows? But having heard, one, through the public and, and through the newspapers and through the school committee itself, that you have a qualified individual veteran who's offered their services, having heard firsthand from another qualified veteran from a highly-regarded school district that he would have interest, only to kick that can down the road is, is not serving anybody but a couple of individuals. And in closing, you know, it's, it's the same sort of, it's the same thing I used to advise, whole other playing field, obviously, but advise the folks with the, in Little League, was anybody who kinda opens up their statement, prefaces their statement with, you know, we're here for the kids, and then they ramble on, 99% of the time, it's complete and utter baloney. And I think that rings true here as well. The politics are just unfortunate, and that's it. Anybody else have questions or comments? Seeing none, does anybody want the motion to be reread, or are we comfortable voting? I'm sorry?
I have some language, do you want me to read it back?
Sure, just to be clear.
I have a motion that a letter is drafted from the Southbridge Town Council, expressing no confidence in the Southbridge School Committee, and is sent to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Southbridge School Committee, and the Southbridge Superintendent.
And just for clarification, I'm gonna defer to Council Manah. Is there anybody you, who do you anticipate penning this? Is it something you want the manager to write, myself, somebody else? Or does it matter? I'm just curious, since it's a, a letter being submitted, that's all.
I think you as the chair.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure so that I don't, if, if it passes, not do it, assuming that somebody else is. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I didn't hear it. Who's gonna write the letter?
It's been suggested I would.
Okay.
Council Steves?
I do have a question that, we've thrown out a whole bunch of different ideas. If we're gonna be doing this letter, what is it actually going to say?
Well, I was...
Other than just no confidence, that doesn't say anything, really.
I believe that it would, it would just be a summary of the grievances, for lack of a better term, that have been aired this evening.
And what are we going to do to fix them? That's my real concern, because what is, what does this do to fix the problems that we all agree are our problem in the schools?
Ultimately, in my, my perception anyways...
How do we fix this?
Is, it's a call to action. Certainly, this, this body does not necessarily have the ability to make the changes that I think most believe need to be taken. And, and I hate to say it this way, because I, I don't want it to come off as hyperbole or, or over the top, but it's, it's, as a history guy, it's much in the way that, that Jefferson's Declaration of Independence doesn't fix anything, it's just a call to action.
Can we move to question?
Sure. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilor Steves?
I haven't said anything. As I, as I said earlier, I don't think I really... I haven't said anything. As I said earlier, I don't think I'm really prepared to vote on this. But I agree with a lot of the arguments.
No?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Vando?
Yes.
Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pelican?
Yep.
Eight yes, one no.
Motion carriers? Sure. Briefly, please.
Since you've all spent an hour now. I wanted to mention, we overlooked something in our packet, and I apologize, because I'd been out of town, so when I was looking at my packet, I missed this. I saw it in the paper, though, last week, and I meant to say something, and then it was staring us in the face, and I don't believe it was announced by our acting town manager tonight. But I just want to congratulate our water department, because the Southbridge Water Department received the 2015 Drinking Water Award. It was in the TNG, as I said, I read it last week, I can't remember which paper. And it's pretty significant. It's the second time in three years. It's not easy to do. There was a press release on it. They receive a wonderful certificate on this, for outstanding performance and achievement for 2014, from the Commonwealth of Mass Department Environmental Protection Drinking Water Program. And they get a wonderful certificate signed by our governor, Charlie Baker, and Karen Coliti, our lieutenant governor. And I, again, want to congratulate our Whitewater for running our plant and our DPW for, from all that they do, in order to supply us with great, healthy, safe drinking water. And we should be proud, this is an accolade to be proud of here in our community, because now we supply a lot of water to a lot of people. So just wanted everybody to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to be safe, Councilor Carrasco, you had the floor at the time. I don't know if you still seek to hold it.
Oh, was that...
We can move on to Agenda Item Number 14.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 14, discussion of next meeting date.
Monday, June 1st, 2015, 7:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. And adjournments?
So moved second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.